Start our February 5th work session to order. I just want to make mention that our mayor is out sick today. And so we just send our thoughts and prayers for a speedy recovery for him. So we can go ahead and get started with, um, there are no awards and presentations or proclamations. Uh, so we'll go ahead and go straight into, um, old business. First item, uh, we're going into the old business. First item is the zoning ordinance amendment, building height and density. I believe that was, um, you, Mr. Perkel?
Okay, thank you. So I brought this up at the, uh, meeting last month. Um, in reviewing the zoning ordinances, I had some concerns about density and heights, um, allowed in the city. The first one is the central business district, um, which is basically the Broad Street area. Um, and looking over the zoning ordinance, so I, I provided some additional information in the packet for you if you want to take a look at those. Um, so there is a chart in there that shows Broad Street and max building heights. Um, and the page before that, which I may not have printed out, said, I believe in general, the max height in the central business, business district is 70 feet. Um, except as noted in the chart, and the chart covers, um, all of the area between Broad Street and Highway 20, uh, with the addition of the triangle, um, where the old school used to be. And if you look at the heights of those buildings, it allows, um, 84 feet and 130 feet. So potentially up to, if you're doing 10 stories of feet, that's 13 story building, uh, at 84 feet. If it's 10 a foot, that would be an eight story building. I don't think that any of those are appropriate for Sugar Hill. So I wanted to, um, see about having that table removed and the maximum height lowered. Um, we discussed that a bit at the, uh, last meeting. We did pass a moratorium on anything over 70 feet, right? And so the discussion was really, um, I'd like to send this to P and Z for modification. But the question is, what should the max height be? Um, there was questions over how to determine the height, right? The zoning ordinance that we used to have stated, uh, the max height in the city was two stories and a basement, right? At some point in time, that was modified, but they changed the measurement from stories to feet, right? And so that puts a little ambiguity in there, you know, is a, is a story 10 feet, is it 12 feet? It probably depends on the type of building, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever. And then you've got the height on top of the building of the roof. Is it a flat roof, as you would see on some of the downtown buildings? Is it a pitched roof? You know, what could that be? And so I think there were the request there was to go back to, uh, the planning department and ask for some clarification on what the wording should be. Um, my thought is five story buildings that we have here are too high. I wouldn't want to see any more than that. Um, I think in that area, four stories is, is probably about the max there should be. Um, what does that equal height wise, you know? And, and what is the exact way to, to state that? Should it be some combination of stories and height or, you know, how should that be? So that's, that's basically, um, what's behind it. And I guess now the, the thing should be, um, open for discussion to see, uh, what the input there is. And also see if, uh, the planning director came up with suggested wording on how to set those heights.
Thanks, Mr. Perkel. So now open it up for, uh, questions from the council. Oh, I'm sorry. I'll actually take it, I'll pass it to, uh, Kipo.
We don't have recommendations for revisions yet. We wanted to ask more questions about what the, uh, kind of policy direction, uh, should be as we go into the process with the planning commission, uh, to do a zoning ordinance amendment. Uh, we have advertised for a, uh, public hearing on the issue in, uh, at the planning commission meeting this month. Um, the third Monday of, uh, this month. Uh, but revisions are pending, kind of getting direction from the council. So we've, um, and I apologize sending it to you late. I didn't realize it was in the, wasn't in the agenda packet, uh, as of Friday. I put it in the wrong folder for Ned to upload it, uh, when I, on Friday morning. But we researched kind of in, and have shown the different building heights for the building types that we have, uh, referenced in our appendix. Uh, the supplemental use provisions and design standards that are associated with the different residential types.
So we just jump in there just to clarify, uh, those are part of item number two. Uh, the only part I talked about so far was item number one, which was the downtown. But I'm happy to get into two as well, if we want to combine that discussion. I do have some thoughts on those different heights as well, but continue.
Yes, well, that, the, that RS 72 and R 36, um, building types, uh, do, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. We were talking, uh, the first agenda item was for downtown. Um, the 84 foot height limit and the 130 foot height limit, those areas are largely built out. The, um, tallest building that we have is just under 70 feet. And that would be the Solis, uh, building. Certainly I wouldn't recommend going shorter than 70 feet.
I wouldn't recommend going 70 or higher. I think that's too, too tall. I moved here to get away from that. Uh, but any of those properties that you say are already built, could be built higher. And I think there's additional property to the, I guess that southeast that's not built out, that it would allow 84 feet.
Mr. Juana, you know?
Yes, that's correct. There are portions of that, uh, max building height kind of overlay map, uh, that kind of takes the highest buildings around the center of the central business district, uh, kind of where city hall sits and then tapers down to lower heights as you, um, kind of move further out from the center. There are along Alton Tucker Boulevard and kind of behind the, uh, racetrack on the, west side of, kind of that wedge. Those are undeveloped or underdeveloped or, uh, could be redeveloped. And then there's a portion of land between, uh, Hillcrest and, uh, the Holbrook that is, that has some undeveloped land.
So I guess just following up there, um, as I said, when I left, uh, we had built this building. Um, I thought it would have been the centerpiece of downtown instead of being hidden away. And, uh, I would not have wanted to see anything exceed it. Certainly the five story buildings is, is too high. Um, and, and so that, my proposal would be four stories. So that's nothing higher than what's already here, tapering down from what's already here in the center. And then, you know, whatever additional footage, maybe 10 feet for roofing height or whatever. But that, that's what I think we ought to go with.
Okay, uh, open it up for any questions from council?
I guess, uh, they are kind of similar in that they're both building height discussions. But to me, the central business district and the R 36 and R 72 zonings are, they're, they're, yeah, they're very different characters. Um, as far as the downtown goes, I, I mean, we, Kipo, by the way, Kipo, we did have this. It was under item two in our agenda. So we did, we did get a copy of this in the, in the agenda on Friday. So it was, it was there, just tacked on to number two. So we have Solis at 69 feet, the local at 61 feet, and city hall at 58 feet roughly is what, uh, what Kipo gave us in this information. So we have that kind of as a point of reference. I, I mean, personally, I have, I don't, I don't have a problem with going to the 70 feet. I think it makes it simple in, in the event that one of the buildings in downtown is lost, that those buildings are, could be rebuilt as they are, uh, without any having to get variances or having any issues when it comes to, to rebuilding them or grandfathering them or making that sort of messy. As far as a few, I mean, I, personally, what I think might be something that we should consider is, um, at, uh, above three stories, that they actually have an offset. And what that does is the face of the building, then instead of presenting as a five, for example, a five story building, would have three stories and then offset that some distance. And I, Kipo, I don't know if you've looked into that to see what a typical offset would be. But what that does is effectively at the third story, it would pull the building face back some distance, whether it's 10 feet or 20 feet. And if you, uh, if you see other buildings that are like that, there's a very different sod and feel to them. So they don't, they, they don't feel nearly as tall because that offset hides that taller portion of the building behind, especially that third story. Um, I think that might be something that we consider. I have no problem getting rid of the, personally, the 130 or the 84 foot building height. I, I don't, I don't see any reason to keep that around, especially, most of it's built out, as Kipo pointed out. And any of that parts that are built out, that they wouldn't, I can't imagine they would accommodate a building of that size anyway. It would be inappropriate on something that small. So, um, I have no problem eliminating the 84 and 130 foot building height requirements in downtown. Personally, I'm leaving it at 70 feet. Uh, as far as the number of stories, are you suggesting, Mr. Perkel, that like a four story limit and/or 70 feet, whichever is shorter? Or is, or how are?
Since the center of the downtown is already built, and that's the higher point, as this already showed, 130 and dropping off to 84. 70 is already the height point, I think dropping off there as well. Um, so these are five story.
Something too worth maybe pointing out is that, um, each project, each future project in the central business district and the town center overlay would require design review board approval. So, um, and thinking about stepping a building back, um, kind of the way that a building feels from the sidewalk is kind of a function of the, the street width and the height and the mass and the materials and, uh, the landscaping and all. There's a lot of different factors that kind of go in how a building feels at the street. Probably those are best answer on a case by case basis.
So if we were to, just throwing out some ideas here for the purposes of conversation, require, a requirement for buildings in excess of three stories to have an offset to be determined at the design review board. A some, and that way, your point, a building along highway 20 with an offset would be different than a building along West Broad Street with an offset for the purposes of the way it would be present at the street. That's, if that's what we're going for is, is trying to reduce that, that height feeling and appropriateness. That may be a compromise would be, uh, above three stories to a maximum of 70 feet. That above three stories that have some sort of an offset. But that's just a, an idea for consideration from, for council that that way, we would leave the, uh, unless, Gary, are you suggesting we do a 70?
I, I think 70.
Now classified as 130 be 70 feet? And then what is now classified as 84 feet be four, four story maximum, is that?
I'd be fine with that. I say that, the only, um, thing there is, there's a lot of what's in the 130 already developed that's not 70 feet. I don't think it is anyway, the stuff going back down the triangle. So I don't know if that would open up for, uh, I don't think they would plan to tear down and build higher right then. But at some point in the future, that might still allow. But, but maybe we just address that down the road and deal with this now. I mean, if we have consensus on something, um, I think 70 is a whole lot better than 130.
I think, to tailor to your point earlier, I think I'd rather see something cohesive between all of them, not just 84 and 130. Um, I kind of like what you said when you said 70 feet or four stories, you know, and we can also include the offset. I kind of like that language a little bit better, just cohesive. Make everything in the central business district one, one set of requirements. Then going forward, you know, we, we know what it is in, in the central business district.
Well, they're not that now, until you'd be putting potentially an additional 30 feet on what we're talking about, four stories on the, the undeveloped area.
Say, say that again, you'd be putting additional 30 feet.
Well, if you're going from four stories and you equate that to 10 feet a story, which is somewhat common, maybe higher in commercial buildings. But if you're going from four stories at equal on 40 feet or whatever, 40 plus roof to 70, that's another story or potentially two you could put on there on that undeveloped area that's getting closer toward the corner. Because if you drop down to where the racetrack is, obviously that's a one story building, right? And then you got Bob Wood Realty, which is a two story building right there. And then you're jumping up to at least five, which this is five and 70 feet. Or, you know, if the, if the heights of the ceilings are, are smaller, it may be six feet or something. I just think, um, that's still a bit higher than I'd prefer it to go is 70 across the board. City Hall is two stories and 58 feet.
But most buildings aren't going to be designed with that sort of cupola and stuff on it, plus?
That's not inclusive of the cupola. The, the 58 is to the, actually to the, correct me if I'm wrong, Kipo, 50, 58 feet is to the top of the, the roof line right above where it says city of Sugar Hill on the front of city hall, correct? The cupola is actually 84 feet tall and the top of the cupola is 97 feet tall.
Yeah, the dome is 84 feet and the spire thing is, uh, the 90?
So if we remove the cupola and, and, and the spire, we're, we're at 58 feet tall. In this case, on a two story building, the local is a five story building, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And it is 61 feet tall. Solis also a five story building, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And it's 69 feet tall. So I think from a, from a standpoint of what we're talking about being built in downtown, I don't know that there's a, it's, a commercial building is going to be much taller than 10 feet on a story, especially given the topography that we have to deal with here in downtown. I mean, we've got any number of, of topographic challenges that change the height of our buildings in downtown. I mean, I, I think a, uh, personally, I would say three story with an offset above that, up to a maximum of 70 feet tall. And if it's five stories, we're not going to see anything much taller than five stories in downtown anyway, because it goes from, from stick built construction to concrete and steel, which is a whole different level of construction costs that, that our market just isn't going to, especially in today's world, is not going to support. So I think.
Apartments here were stick buildings, they're not concrete and steel.
That's, that's what I said, yeah. Anything above five stories is, is required to be concrete and steel. So what we have in downtown right now is stick built. Um, and so that's, I mean, I don't see anything, I, I, I don't see anything above five stories ever, at least in the, in the, uh, in the far future, maybe 40, 50, 100 years from now, we might see something different. But I think a five, to me, I, I think a three story with a, an offset up to a maximum of 70 feet tall, which is going to be five stories, or if we want to say five story max, three.
I'll put that in there, yeah.
So to me, a three, offset above three stories to be determined at design review with a five story max, no taller than 70 feet. Is that a reasonable?
Yep.
Is that a reasonable, is everybody reasonable with that? Okay.
Very reasonable.
Okay, all right. So Kipo, from the sounds of it, uh, if, if we're all in agreement, it sounds like we're in agreement. It would be, uh, three stories, above three stories with an offset up to a maximum of five stories or 70 feet, whichever is shorter. Is that fair enough?
Yep.
Awesome, great, great conversation, um, great dialogue on that. So, uh, we can move on to, um, item number two. And, uh, Mr. Perkel, I believe that item is also yours.
Yep, so item number two is a couple of things. Uh, I'll attack the density first and then the height. So you've got, um, it should be in your packet, although I don't. Um, there's a chart in there, um, that lists, I don't see it here. Uh, there's a chart in there that lists, um, the maximum density on the zoning district. Uh, yep, that's the one I'm referring to. And on it, there is, uh, for R 36, the maximum density is eight units per acre and has been since the nineties. They changed the, it used to be RM classification. They changed it to R 36 and R 72 at some point, um, I think within the last 10 years. Um, but there's a footnote in there, footnote number four, that says maximum density may be increased to 12 units per acre if the project includes driveways and garages with alley access only and at least, uh, one on-street parking for 30% of total number of units. I would like to see that footnote struck. So we just have a maximum density of eight units per acre in R 36 instead of that footnote that would allow a 50% increase. That's it on density. And then, um, the heights that are mentioned in there, keep in mind that, um, this is residential zoning and it could be right next to, and in frequent cases is right next to an RS 100 neighborhood. I would reference the new town homes on highway 20 that are right next to the springs. The heights on these, for a town home, you're going up instead of across. So, uh, as I said before, the max heights used to be two stories in a basement. Town homes, you're giving them three because they're going up instead of out. And that's how you get your, your square footage on those. I don't necessarily have a problem with that, it says. Uh, but consistent with the other, uh, zoning changes, these are changed to, to go from stories into heights. So you get that ambiguity on, on the building. Is it stories or, or is it feet? Do you have more stories per feet and that sort of thing? In this one, it says town homes, max height is 40 feet. Um, if that's three stories with a, a pitched roof on it, then I don't have a huge problem with that. But if you go on to the other types of, of houses allowed here, the stacked duplex, triplex is 60 feet. Uh, again, if you're in your home, you don't want to see 60 foot building with people looking down into your backyard next to you. Um, the big house, uh, 50 feet to eve. Um, but is that, you know, I mean, if you're going flat roof or something, which probably you're not on residential, but that's five stories. Otherwise it could be four stories. Again, I don't want that wall next to my property. And then other attached is, uh, 50 feet to eve. Um, I think three stories is more than enough. Uh, I would prefer back in the, um, to go back to the previous two with a basement. But three is better than four or five that you may be able to wrangle out of that footage. And that's where I'd like to see those reduced.
Thanks, Mr. Perkel. I'm Mr. Juana.
Okay, so we had, uh, again, kind of some questions about, you know, is this? Well, first, I think, you know, we tried to put together a policy that, uh, promoted options in our housing stock. Uh, for a lot of years, we only had one option, one type of option. We built thousands of those. And right now we have, uh, two very ends of the spectrum. So, or two, uh, predominantly heavy at the two ends of the spectrum for our housing portfolio. And again, there's no RS 72 or R 36 land that is just out there unzoned. There's, each project has been approved and has been entitled for zoning and is in some sort of, uh, state of review or construction. So there's a chance for each project to kind of mitigate the type of buildings that are allowed on a particular piece of property, given the context around it. And that could be building heights or stories or materials or however you choose, uh, to help that fit into the neighborhood. Um, so these are not, you know, a big house is just going to pop up next to a neighborhood, uh, unannounced. The, so what we've done is given you what those heights are based on those building types. And, um, are really asking the question, you know, how, how do we move forward with kind of at least giving the opportunity for a market-based approach and satisfying our housing needs? Um, and I understand even with the options, we still have two ends of the spectrum. We either have the single family detached and townhouses on one side, or the mid-rise apartments that we have, uh, that have been developed recently. Um, but at least the option is there to do kind of the in-between, so.
Yeah, so I would say the, um, single family is predominant and that's what the success of the city's been. People moved here for that. They wanted to be in this area, um, because of the relative low density housing that was available, as well as, you know, other things that are around the schools and that sort of thing. Uh, if you're looking for high density, it is all over the county and all over the metro area. You certainly can find that anywhere you want. Um, so I would say we've been successful, um, with, um, the single family, uh, homes. I would also say that is the predominant use in the city. And if you're building something dissimilar to that and you're not on one of the major highways, you're encroaching somebody's residential area that's already established. And I don't want to see a four or five story building next to my house with people looking in my backyard. Um, and that's, that's what the basis of it are. I think a lot of times when we've done some of these housing studies and that sort of thing, and they may say, oh, we're short of apartments or whatever, they're considering the city limits of the city, which are not contiguous everywhere. But it's overlooking the fact that we're immediately next to Swanee and Buford, the Mall of Georgia and Coming and these other areas, which might be included in another city's, um, boundaries, just distance wise. I mean, you're what, five miles to the mall and you can find thousands and thousands. They've rung the Mall of apartments. They've rung the Brave, the Brave Stadium there with apartments. They've rung, um, um, Top Golf with apartments. There's no shortage of apartments and high density housing around. I don't think we need any more of it here.
Yeah, and I, so I'd, and I, I hear you. And, uh, I think I just have maybe one more thought or question. The, and I, I'm not suggesting that I believe that these standards are perfect and that they are the solution to, um, the affordability issue and the options issue for aging in place from a young family to an aging senior with, uh, you know, growing mobility challenges and to, to have that whole spectrum of, uh, a household being able to age in place. Uh, certainly, I think with any of the policies, we can refine to get, uh, better application. But the, um, one of the things, well, two of the major, I guess, themes that we have consistently heard over years is an acute sensitivity to kind of the growing affordability problem and, um, being able to age in place. And I think this, and I may be saying this the wrong way, but unilaterally kind of taking out any of the options from, uh, to let the market respond in a, in a way that we can place these contextually appropriate uses. Because each one would require rezoning action with associated conditions. Um, I think, you know, we should just be strategic about the options that we remove at this point, so.
Yeah, I, I would follow that up though with, if you leave a density or a height on the books, uh, while you mentioned that can be discussed during rezoning, the developers, in my experience, are always going to push for the highest density and the highest height and the most that they can get out of it. Um, and I, I just don't see where that matches the, the character of the single family neighborhoods that are the predominant thing in our area. And again, the, the land use that we have here, I mean, you're talking. And again, the, the land use that we have here, I mean, you're talking in the city limits versus what's in a five or ten-square-mile area, and there's plenty of other options around.
Okay, I'll open it up for comments and questions for council. All right, Mr. Anderson.
Well, I, I would say that the last thing I'd want to do is tell our citizens that, well, it's, it's too bad you don't have your housing type here, you have to move out, even if it's nearby. I don't, I don't find that to be a good answer to our age-in-place. I identify in the city of Sugar Hill, I have a single-family home, but there will come a time, and I think it's probably in, in all of our futures, in which a single-family home, a twenty-five-hundred or three-thousand-square-foot home is not the best choice for us, either from a mobility standpoint or some other, some other situation that may, may happen to us. And I, I would love to stay in the city if that, if and when that happens. To me, and I think most of our citizens would prefer to stay in our city. Now, that being said, as Kipo pointed out, R thirty-six, there are no R thirty-six properties sitting undeveloped or unentitled in the city, so that means that any future R thirty-six or RS, and Kipo, have we ever zoned an RS seventy-two subdivision we have? Okay, which one is that?
Don't remember the name of the project, but it's on Whitehead Road towards kind of the edge.
Oh, that was the,
On the Moody property.
On the Moody property, RS seventy-two. That's right. Do you happen to know what the density of that RS seventy-two property is? I know I'm putting you on the spot here, I just out of curiosity if you knew.
It was under four units an acre, for sure.
Four units an acre. And do you know the density of the property that Gary mentioned on Old Coming Road and Highway twenty, the townhome development that's there next to Garner Springs?
I think it's around six units an acre.
Six units an acre. And it, and their maximum building height is forty feet, correct, on that one? Because it's, those are townhomes, which is, okay. As far as, as from that standpoint, you know, thirty-five feet versus forty feet, that's, you know, pretty typical, a single-family home is going to be thirty-five feet tall, probably taller if you measured it from the backside of it, from the basement level, if it, if it has a basement.
Again, I'm more interested in, in stories than the measured height there.
So are, are you suggesting a three-story maximum, then, in the R thirty-six zoning? Is that
Yep.
three-story maximum? Okay. And then, sorry, I'm just looking at this other, if you all have comments, please.
Yeah, you were talking about the height of that townhomes being forty, which it may be, but if you go by the springs and look, there's no real buffer between those, and maybe that's another thing we needed to look at is, is buffer, but they, they have planted a, a small row of trees there, but they appear to be like ten feet off the property line or so, forty feet high, looking right over the neighbor's fences in at their backyard. That's the, the basis for the concern. And not just there, but wherever else it may be throughout the city.
I, just going back to you, Kipo, about the housing affordability. I know Paul and I have had a conversation about housing affordability. I, I understand the concerns around housing affordability, but we live, we live in a desirable area, and unfortunately, the market does dictate what land prices are. And that's a, I think that's going to be a tough nut for us to crack. I think we're working on it. And it's definitely something I want to see in terms of affordability, you know, and even, I just think we're going to be hard-pressed to, to have a developer come to us and actually want to build a, a fourplex stacked or a duplex or a tri, I mean, that's just not a, that's just not a product that is going to sell in our market for what the land prices are at the end of the day. I mean, I'm with you, I hear you about the affordability. I just don't know, I mean, us doing rezoning and everything like that, I don't know if that's really going to solve it. I think it's a way that we can get to, to give housing options, like you said, but at the end of the day, is it going to bring a developer to purchase a piece of land and actually develop something that is affordable? I just don't, I don't know. I mean, that's, that's a tough nut to crack, and like I said, I think Paul's working on it, prior council has, has worked on some iterations that are coming out, but I just, it's a work in progress for sure, and I think it's something that we have a duty to try to do. And I think options are, options are good start, but it also comes to the, the point where developers have to come to the table, too, and, and want to do something like that.
Well, in terms of housing affordability, I certainly have great concerns about that. My sons are college age and will be looking to buy at some point. I'm concerned about getting priced out of my own house. It's, you know, nearly doubled over the last ten years and taxes going up with it. The building prices going from a hundred dollars a square foot to over two hundred a square foot. That's a massive part of it, and land has gone up, but not the same in relation to the, the cost of the materials and the cost of the labor. But that is not something that we can control or manage. That's something that's going to take federal level before that problem can be solved.
That's what I was going to say, too, about affordability. There's only so much we can do in that area. And right now, with the way the market is, we've got, you've got your new builds, you've got townhomes that are selling for eight hundred thousand dollars apiece. A studio at Solace that goes for sixteen, about sixteen fifty a month for a studio. And as far as aging in place, Sugar Hill has a lot of variety. We have older neighborhoods that do have smaller homes, that do have the ranch-style homes. And those are available, too, and be a little bit more affordable because they're in older neighborhoods. But I think we have such a good variety. We have neighborhoods that have been here thirty, thirty-five years, some only five or ten years. So I like that we have a, we do have a wide range of options in Sugar Hill.
There's also a wide range of aging care facilities. You've got Benton House, you've got this here, there's a memory care home on Level Creek Down near North Gwinnett, there's one back behind Kroger, so there are quite a few things already in place as well.
And keep in mind, we're also talking about, you know, someone graduating from high school and launching from their, from their parents' home into their own place, and so.
I have concerns about that, but a higher building is only going to lead to the higher price. That's not going to be a, a more affordable building. And that's what we're talking about here, is the max building heights and not forcing out the people that are already here.
I think just looking at a supply and demand kind of lens of the affordability issue, smaller units that could be in taller buildings could be an affordable option for a young household starting out that we don't have a lot of. Higher doesn't necessarily mean more expensive.
No, not necessarily, but what we're building currently in terms of our mid-rises are, are Class A, Class A luxury. Those mid-rises will never, I mean, until they become Class B, Class C, they're not going to be able to, you know, have someone coming out of high school and getting there. And I, I hate to say that, but we, we built Class A luxury, Class A properties. I understand, you know, that, that the, the pricing model is there. I mean, it's just, it's a tough, it's tough all around. I mean, but I hear what you're saying of, yeah, there's a potential of, of mid-rises being here with smaller-unit studios, and they're being, being a smaller and a cheaper price. I, I hear you. So, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, I think, again, that's also, it's, for a lot of years, not very many multifamily units have been provided, especially in, you know, suburban, semi, semi-urban communities like ours. So when there's fewer options, those prices tend to be higher, and that, that's the market can support those rents because the demand is there, but the supply is not.
There's massive numbers of multifamily that have been built in the last ten years in Gwinnett County, particularly in the Buford and Mall of Georgia area, and now around here, eighteen hundred units in Sugar Hill. So there is no shortage of them.
But I don't believe we're talking about multifamily at the moment, we're actually talking about for-sale product. And one of the ways that we could help to reduce the price of these units, and this is probably something that's probably more appropriate for a holistic discussion at a, at a retreat, but that would be a reduction in the lot areas and the minimum house sizes, because when our minimum house size, even in the RS seventy-two, is sixteen hundred square feet on a single story and eighteen hundred square feet on a two-story, you're talking about just for the, not including the lot itself, at an eighteen hundred square-foot two-story home at two hundred dollars a square foot, a three hundred and sixty thousand-dollar build, and that's not inclusive of the land price. So you're already, even on our RS seventy-two, seventy-two hundred square-foot lot, you're at five hundred thousand dollars before you've even, I mean, that's,
Right.
And that's something that we do control, and that is minimum, minimum dwelling sizes. And that is one way we could reduce the costs and introduce opportunities for first-time homebuyers and senior citizens that are looking to downsize, or, or folks who are empty nesters looking to downsize within our community, but stay in our community, would be to come up with more options for smaller houses on smaller lot sizes. So you still maintain the quality, but you compromise on the house size for most people that are starting out, either with a young family or empty nesters, don't need a three-thousand square-foot home, don't desire a three-thousand-square-foot home. So going to some other zoning classification, if it is R thirty-six, that would allow for smaller units and smaller lot sizes, so that you, you could, in fact, get the, the, the more affordable homes at, say, a twelve-hundred-square-foot home, which is, which is a decent-sized home. It's something we don't have much around here. I know we have a variety of age, of product of age, but our lot sizes generally are RS one hundred or are, or largely RS one fifty, which is fifteen thousand square-foot lots and two thousand square-foot minimum homes. So that's something that's probably beyond the scope of what we're discussing this evening, something that we should probably talk about as a more nuanced zoning strategy. It's from a building height standpoint, if that's really what we're focused on, and I know that we're talking also about eliminating the density, the density bonus, it's item four. I, I mean, personally, as part of a more holistic zoning strategy, I'm fine with getting rid of the, the density bonus if we can find a way to, in our zoning ordinance, to be more flexible, say, in our dwelling unit sizes. I think that would be, or, and lot sizes, which I think the R thirty-six is the intent, if that's right, Kipo, with it, the intent of R thirty-six was to do that. But maybe we clarify, maybe we.
Well, you can get six units an acre at R seventy-two, but the sixteen hundred square feet may be something to consider, whether it should be allowed to be smaller or that sort of thing.
I, I mean, I, personally, I would like to see the RS seventy-two go down to like a six thousand square-foot minimum lot size, because you cannot get six units per acre. If you just multiply six times seventy-two hundred, you're at, you're at an acre, and you haven't even dedicated any right-of-way for streets yet. So six is not realistic, given that, that unit or that minimum lot size is seventy-two hundred square feet. If we were to reduce that, for example, to six thousand, and then cut the, the minimum dwelling unit sizes in half to, say, eight hundred and, and maybe a thousand on two-story, now you've got a product option that may be a little bit more realistic and a little bit more achievable for a first-time homebuyer.
Unless they're turned into rental units, and then you've got twice as many backed up to the, where this stuff will go, the undeveloped area we have is pretty much all going to be surrounded by RS one hundred anyway. So then what kind of problems are you causing for that, that neighborhood? So, yeah, I think you do get into a bigger discussion when you start talking about that.
And, but that's, that's a, that's a possibility in literally any development is, is going to, is for that to happen.
I think it's more likely the, the more affordable they are, the more likely you are to see that, but maybe that could be controlled through zoning or something else.
Well, I think when we talk about the, the limiting the number of, which we've done in almost every zoning, at least recently, which is limit the, the number of units. Now, there's a certain level, and Frank or Paul, you can correct me if I'm wrong, from a federal housing requirements where we, while we can put in the requirement for a covenant restricting the number of rentals in an HOA-controlled subdivision, we can't explicitly control that at the city level if I, if I understand the Federal Housing Act correctly. Frank, I, I know this is getting kind of far afield of probably what you typically get into, but can we, we, can we actually limit that? Or how is, and I know that there's been several bills at the state level, too, that kind of have been kicked around regarding this. Is that something that we have the ability to control?
So that is not something that typically cities and counties get into enforcing. There's often in homeowners association covenants, rental minimums or, or, excuse me, rental maximums, but those are enforced by the homeowners association because that's a private kind, that, that declaration that's recorded in the public record is a private contract between the homeowners association and the people who bought property in that association. And so that's not something the city has the ability to enforce, or a county has the ability to enforce, that's something that the homeowners association would have to enforce. And so you will see that in some zoning ordinances, there are requirements about, in some situations, minimums or maximums related to rental units, but that's typically done on the private level, not at the city or county municipal level.
And, and Kipo, you may know this better than me, but I think there's large numbers of, say, the properties along Hillcrest, a lot of the older subdivisions in there, in many cases, fifty percent of the, of the subdivision is already rental property. So, so restricting, trying, attempting to deal with this issue, this kind of this unknown issue, if that's the issue, we, I mean, already we're seeing those older homes that typically would be maybe more affordable have already been purchased in the marketplace and are now rentals, whereas we're talking about new subdivisions where we do put this covenant in place. Now, granted, it is a private covenant, and it is the responsibility of the HOA to enforce that covenant. But again, it's how much interference are we going to have in the free marketplace and attempt to insert ourselves as a, as a government into the free market? It is, is a question that we have to wrestle with, but in, in my opinion, if we really do want to tackle at least the ability for some affordability in our city, a way to do it is through that and through a zoning action, because any property that would, that would go through this would be required to come through a zoning action where that covenant could be put in place at that time, because there is no R, just R thirty-six property sitting out there that this, these new restrictions would actually apply to. It would be actually to future zonings that would come before this council anyway.
And, and in some of your older subdivisions, even if some of your older subdivisions had rental restrictions, and there was a time in Georgia law where homeowners associations were only actually allowed to exist for twenty years, and they, there was no, they did not automatically renew. In order to renew them, there had to be a vote of the homeowners association to renew them, and either people didn't realize that, or most homeowners had no desire to continue the association. And so there are some older subdivisions out there that had some covenants or had some restrictions on them that are no longer applicable or can't be enforced. Now, homeowners association law has changed, covenants automatically renew now as opposed to going away after twenty years. But you also have some, some developments in your city because of their age, they're kind of stuck in that old situation where the homeowners, there's not even an association anymore, or the restrictions that were put in place can't be enforced anymore because they were not properly renewed. Thankfully, Georgia law has changed, and that's not the situation for newer subdivisions.
All right, I, I would just say that's off the topic of the building height, and we're on item number two of twelve, and an hour in almost, so. My thought on this is max three stories across the city in residential areas.
So are we talking about more than the R thirty-six and RS seventy-two zoning, or are we just talking?
No, it was just this, I mean, the others probably don't even allow it anyway. I wasn't getting into the height on them. I think the height, let's see if we got the height requirement listed.
On seventy-two, it's thirty-five feet, and then.
Okay, but, yeah, so that's max three stories. I mean, I'm not talking about. I mean, I'm not talking about expanding it and they couldn't get more than that on there. If that's two stories or three stories at 35 feet. I was mainly, speaking of these other things about the stacked duplex triflex at 60 feet, the big house at 50 feet, other attached at 50 feet. Those are going to be over three stories. I just don't think they're appropriate in the residential areas.
And I guess my point being is if we're going to reduce those building heights and therefore the, reduce the ability for these missing middle products, what I'm suggesting is that that's fine if the context is if we go to RS 72, if building height in this, you know, the building height is the overriding issue. And we're not talking about increased density. What we're actually talking about is allowing for the RS 72 in conjunction with this, since we're talking about a reduction in the ability to deliver this product in the marketplace, is allow for a different product to be delivered within the RS 72. And that may end up being a, you know, we have to change the name of it because I know our convention is the lot size RS 60 with a 6,000 square foot minimum lot area.
Yeah, I think that's a whole nother can of worms I'm not ready to jump into yet.
If that's the case, then, I mean, I guess we're, if we're not talking about a holistic solution, if we're just talking about Band-Aid solutions, that's a different conversation.
Well, there's other things like heights and HM1 is 70 feet. I think that's too high, too, but I'm not trying to bite them all off at one time. I'm just trying to get the most egregious at first and then move on to look at the others. I think they all need to be addressed, but those are the immediate ones.
So that goes back to my original point. This seems to be more of a conversation that we should take the time. I mean, I know we're an hour into this, but these are important issues that will impact the ability for the free market to function in our city. We should really be talking about this holistically if we're going to be making these changes rather than piecemeal. If there are other issues in play beyond just these, then it seems more appropriate that we deal with this, with the whole issue with the zoning rather than one at a time, you know, onesies, twosies, because they are linked together at the end of the day.
I don't know if this is appropriate to do this at this time. Is there a way that we can direct staff to go off of what you're talking about, Taylor, to kind of compile what our sister cities around us are doing in terms of minimum lot area that matches RS, you know, is close to RS 150, 172, 36 and what those unit sizes are? That, I think that, I mean, I know it's going to be a holistic journey to kind of go through all of these. I think I would like to see that, just to see where we kind of compare apples to apples in regards to zoning, not saying that any of them are doing it right or they have the right answer. I'm not sure, Kipo, I'm not sure if you're aware of any city that has really achieved a missing middle kind of zoning approach. I mean, they would be a great jumping off point, but are you aware of any of those? Anybody that's achieved that?
Well, when you get into that, you can look at all the cities. And I don't know how many we're up to in Gwinnett now with the new ones they're proposing and the one they've added, 15 or 16 cities. Every one of them is distinct and they have their own characteristics. Our characteristic has been low-density residential and I plan on keeping it that way. Swine's always been higher density, not interested in being Swine, Norcross or Duluth, Lilburn, not interested in being any of them. So we're talking about creating a newer, higher-density zoning district. I'm not in for that.
Well, just to clarify, I'm not suggesting a higher density at all. I was keeping the maximum density the same. I was not, I was not talking about increasing density.
Okay, yeah, if there's things to be looked at for flexibility versus density, then I'm certainly willing to look at that. But again, I think that's going to be quite a bit more drawn out. I don't see any reason that a max of three stories is not appropriate in residential areas. And that's what I'm looking at here. I don't disagree that there needs to be a larger discussion on things, but I don't see a reason to limit this based on that. I think that's, we're going to have a lot more discussion to get into in terms of zoning and other items and we just need to take the time and deal with them and move forward.
Well, then my counter to that would be I don't know what the urgency is because it would not impact, it would literally, this discussion impacts no existing property on the ground. It would only be for new zonings coming to us, which we already have the ability and option to limit building heights and density and other things. So anyway, I won't say anything further on this. I think we kind of beat this one at this point into the ground. We've got a lot more to cover. That's all I've got for it.
So I still would like to send this to Planning and Zoning with a recommendation of max three stories. And they can have a discussion on it. It can come back to us for discussion. But I'd rather go ahead and send it to Planning and Zoning instead of just sitting on it. In terms of new developments, there could be one anytime. And I just think it's our job here to protect the residents that are here over people that might move in.
All right, no more further comments on item two.
I just have one thing. Basically, what you're saying then, when I'm looking at this chart, is you want to eliminate footnote number four, right?
That is the first part. And the other, where we've got 50 and 60-foot heights, I think those are too tall for residential areas.
I think that's a good start with the footnote number four. And big changes start with small steps. So I think that's a good beginning.
So do we need to send that to Planning and Zoning to have an open conversation? Is that the next step? And, okay.
Okay. All right, so we'll move forward and move on to new business. Before we jump into new business, as already mentioned, we are an hour in and 10 more items remaining on the agenda. A lot of fun. One thing that, you know, and again, I am, I'm going to blame that I'm new for a while, at least for the night. One thing that I would, I'm just kind of looking at is I think that was some really fruitful conversation as related to the top two items and I think that was some great dialogue. As we're going into these next 10 items, there were quite a few items on here without any backup material. And I think that that kind of leads to allowing council and the public and as well as staff being prepared for that productive conversation as what we've just had. So, you know, and again, I think that, you know, council has the right to, based off of our charter, to definitely do that. But, and again, I don't know if there's any guidance on supporting information or backup material to kind of drive that conversation for staff and council to all equally be prepared for, again, a fruitful conversation. So again, just an insight of what I've seen and not sure if that's something that we can look at going forward as far as some opportunities for improvement. All right, so we can go ahead and move to item number three, which is Envision 100, and I believe that is also you, Mr. Owana.
So we're presenting the Envision 100 comprehensive plan for consideration to be adopted tonight. We've run the process. It's been approved by Department of Community Affairs that it meets the state's planning standards. We've gone through that required regional review. We've done extensive outreach and public involvement through the course of developing the plan. And I'm proud of the work that the team has done, that the community has, the effort that the community has put into staying in touch and giving input. And we ask that you adopt the plan so that we can move forward.
Thanks, Mr. Owana. I'll open it up for any comments or questions from the council.
I've got some comments on it. Overall, I think it's a pretty good document. I have a lot of problems with the work program beginning on page 49, 50, and 51. On page 49, there's additional downtown parking at $5.87 million. There's bowl improvements for $4.9 million. Page 50, there's $6 million in pedestrian bridge, $4.2 million in traffic calming, $3.1 million in road network improvements, I don't know what those are, $10.5 million in greenway spending. Page 51, $3 million in green space acquisition, $2 million in Richland Creek Trailhead Park, $1.65 million in green space downtown. That's $41.22 million. The next item we're going to get to is talking about the audit, which shows $46 million in debt. I have no intention of sending forward a $41 million spending plan and new spending when we're $46 million in debt. I think all those items more than a million dollars need to be cut from the work program. We can deal on them as we get to them. Certainly think we need to have more discussion on them, but I am not in favor of sending this plan forward to the state committee to these things that I don't agree with.
Well, just to clarify this, this has already been sent to the state and is coming back to us for formal adoption. The work program, remember, this is an Envision 2039, so it's not in the next two years or anything like that. This is a 15-year horizon of projects that are in there. There is no context in which this is any way related to the $46 million in bond obligations, which are revenue bonds that are being paid off by the revenue by the projects that were built that has nothing to do with the community work program, which are many, in many cases, recreation components or other infrastructure improvements that are benefit to our community, that the community has already expressed a desire to have in through the public input process and the public hearing process. There is no correlation whatsoever between the bond obligations of revenue bonds and what is shown in the Envision 100 plan.
I went to these Envision 100 meetings. I didn't see anything talked about in terms of additional parking deck and this millions of dollars in spending. We were talking about future land use plan and people not wanting more apartments here. I think being able to pay for this is tied to current debt levels. And apparently this was sent to the state and I was unaware, I got no notice of this. It was sent back to the city on January 23rd for changes, which the planning staff made and sent back without our input on these. I mentioned at the time, as a citizen standing right up there during these public hearings on the plan, that I was opposed to spending at that time. When this was sent back, it could have been brought to our notice. We could have suggested to the state or before we sent it back to the state that we wanted changes. But I'm still not in favor of leaving these in the work program.
All right, any further questions or comments from the council? Okay, we'll move on to item number four, and that's contract award road resurfacing.
The recommendation for a contract to complete the 2024 roadway repairs and repaving program that we have previously presented as part of the local maintenance and improvement grant program that we submit to Georgia DOT on an annual basis. We had previously packaged these as two-year contracts. I think this year we wanted to take a run at an annual contract to see what the results would be. We did receive a good bit of interest on the opportunity and was pleasantly surprised with the interest in it. We advertised this back in December. We had 18 different prospective contractors and subcontractors pick up plans for the project. We opened bids on the 25th of January at the advertising requirements for the bid process state law. And we did receive 10 bids. That's up from eight last year with the low bidder being Garrett Paving out of Athens. We did verify the quantities and the calculations in the bids. So Garrett was the apparent low bidder and verified low bidder. And the other bids are presented on the screen for you for comparison purposes. Some of the contractors we've worked with previously were Georgia Paving, Allied Paving, and Blunt Construction. So all of those were pretty competitive. The budgeted amount for this year's program was increased from half a million dollars to $650,000 during the budget development process at the end of 2023. And we did identify most of that funding coming from SPOST with about $240,000 coming from grant program from Georgia DOT. The balance of it was meant to come from general fund sources and they were meant to cover the roads that are listed here we had programmed in for 2024. And this pushed these particular streets past the completion date of the water resource, excuse me, the Gwinnett Department of Water Resources project to replace Water Main and most of Frontier Forest. So many of these streets were in there. Many of them are, have an average score, failing range, zero to 50. There are many others, as many of you have probably observed, that do have some elements that warrant consideration for other types of repairs, but these are the ones that we are recommending for this program. We did kick Alton Tucker, Temple, and Hillcrest into this particular program from last year. And we are seeking funding from the developers of the Terwilliger Pappus Solis Project and Hiddle Homes to make the repairs to those two streets, not Alton Tucker. Road 14 on the list is Magical Way. It is a private street, but we did acquire that under the terms of that purchase agreement. We would be required to make improvements to the segment of that road up until the time it leaves the new city parcel. So that is on the left of the screen there. You can see it there. And Hillcrest segment, Temple, and Alton Tucker. And these were pulled out of last year's program, as I mentioned. On the right side of the screen, you'll see most of Frontier Forest is included. Some of these streets do rate a much higher score than others. We're trying to keep the segment or the area neighborhood in one particular year of improvement. But certainly Hidden Circle Drive does not require as much improvements as some of the others, Wonsley or Creek Trace, for example. And Mill Creek Trace is a small subdivision off of Roberts. Pretty significant in terms of the amount of repair that is needed there. One of the questions that I've fielded from many of the council members has been our pavement condition assessment. This is a screenshot of the area that we were focused on. We do have some other streets that are just as poorly ranked in the zero to 20 category of Pinecrest and then some other streets here and there that were in industrial or commercial sectors. So we are looking at those for consideration of the 2025 program. So with our initial evaluation of the bid results and our verification of the references Garrett Paving provided, we're recommending, awarding the 2024 construction contract to Garrett Paving. My memo does have a typo in it. I will say it's $541,870.49. I left off the 49 cents. That is the recommendation.
Thanks, Mr. Pesesh. I'll open it up for questions or comments with council.
Troy, the, I don't have any issue with the streets we're paving. Where I do have a problem is I don't think we've got our top ten more streets in the city on there. And this map that's here mainly just shows downtown. Doesn't show all the neighborhoods, particularly some that I know are in real bad shape. The Springs and then going down Level Creek Road. Sugar Cross, not Sugar Crossing, is it Sugar Creek, I believe it is. Those are some that are particularly bad that I know. But I, I'm happy to pave these streets. I think we need to be paving more this year.
This is the entire map. The Springs is right there. I think, I think we tried to categorize these geographically. I think I mentioned that.
I understand that. I don't have a problem with that. I'm just saying we need to do more than just this.
Okay.
Troy, any insight, I mean, the, the cost difference from one and two is significant compared to the others. Any insight as to why Garrett is so much cheaper versus the other? Or just, I love the price, don't get me wrong, but a hundred thousand dollars off the next highest bidder, so, or lowest bidder.
I think I took, what I typically do from year to year is I take the high bid and use it for my budget estimate.
Okay.
Come up with my number. I got about six fifty. I put as much in there as I can, I think we can afford at the budget amount. This one came in, came in under last year's numbers, for whatever reason. Garrett, I don't, I don't think I've worked with them before, but we've checked the references. They do a lot of work in Clark County, so Athens there.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
My usual question, Troy, I assume this is edge milling?
Yes, it includes edge milling on all of the streets with carbon gutter.
And other question is, is, do you have a linear feet of street that is being repaved? Do you have a?
It's a little over three miles right now.
Three miles, and what is our typical average? What have we averaged in the past?
Two to three.
Two to three, so it's on the high end of what we typically average for repaving per year?
Correct.
Okay. And do you have, it might be helpful to council if, if, and I appreciate you bringing up this, the map of the entire city. Obviously, that, that screenshot you had was just inclusive of the streets that we're actually proposing to repave. It might be helpful for council if you gave us an, maybe kind of a five-year look ahead at the streets that you would, including this map as a, as a, as, as the data source of, how many, if we're, if we're paving three miles a year, when can we expect to see? And I apologize, I don't have the, I don't have the key in there to know what, which colors, which, I think red and orange were the two worst.
Yeah, red and orange.
So maybe focusing on the red, orange, and yellow, kind of give us a linear feat in each of those, each of those scoring categories, so that we have an idea of scale and, and how much, how many streets are in our, are red? Do we have two miles in red? Do we have eight miles in red? I know we have seventy-nine miles total in the city, I believe. So it might be helpful for us if we had kind of a, a chart to know where, you know, what, what our, what our streets are, how many miles they are, so we can get an idea of how long we're talking about until we get, I mean, not everybody can be blue, and that shouldn't be the expectation. It's not realistic, and I don't even think green, I mean, certainly a street in green is acceptable. And so that might be helpful, this would be helpful for, for those of us on the council that want to take a ride out there and see what a yellow street looks like and what a green street looks like. So it might be helpful just to have a little bit more context for council to, if you could do that, if you could break that out by, one, provide us the document, which I think is fantastic. Keep in mind that there is some subjectivity to it. It's not a perfect science when you're talking about pavement conditions. But it might be helpful for us if we knew the number of miles by color. That would help us out, so we kind of get a, a scale of where we're at as a city. And then we can make more informed decisions as a council about budgetary numbers and how much we should be spending on a yearly basis that's responsible from that standpoint.
This is a few years old, and one of the things that I would like to look at are, again, repair methods. Milling and inlay is not the only repair method that's suitable for all of our streets. And I think there are other ways that we can increase the life of a street without overlaying it with new asphalt, so.
Agreed.
Some of those streets that I mentioned that are better than others, that are scoring in the eighties on this one, we, we could entertain some other micro-surfacing solutions and things that we just typically have not put in the contract. So I think some of the ones that we've used were on the golf course driveway. It's a mineral bond application, not too different than seal coating, but it is a different product, and it increases the UV resistance and pervious nature of the asphalt itself. So we're looking at those solutions. And then one other thing I'll mention is that we are looking at bringing the pavement condition assessment in-house, using some new technology, and that'll allow us to do it on a more regular basis. So we could do it quarterly, we could do it biannually, but we wouldn't have to wait two years. So some of what you see here, two-year-old data, graded over that amount of time.
I, I think that's great. I completely agree with you that looking at alternatives beyond just milling and, and overtopping are great ways to extend the life of our pavement. And that's, those are obviously much cheaper in many cases, and will extend the lives, or the life of our, much of our asphalt even longer and save, one, keep the condition of the pavement in better shape for a longer period of time, and two, allow us to focus on our red and oranges and some yellows. So that would be good.
The pavement costs on the streets that are proposed for this contract work out to about ten dollars a square yard. We're looking at the other solutions being around four dollars a square yard, and that's probably for a two hundred thousand dollar contract from a scale standpoint. So I think you get twice as much out of a contract with something like that than you would out of an overlay. And you get five to ten years out of the micro-surface.
If there's no further questions, all right, we'll move on to item number five. And I believe that's also you, Mr. Pesesh.
Item number five is a request to defer reimbursement resolution that we send annually to the Georgia EPD. This covers our expenses with the Appling Road landfill post-closure monitoring process that we, we spend probably upwards of forty thousand dollars annually. But the eligible expenses associated with that program are seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-seven cents, to be precise. And it does cover expenses in twenty twenty-three associated with the landfill. If you'll recall, the landfill off of Appling Road is about thirty-six acres, about ten of which is inclusive of the landfill burial area. It began receiving waste in nineteen sixty-six and then was closed for new deposits in February of ninety-two. The actual closure and post-closure period began in, in late nineteen ninety-nine, and there is the anticipated thirty-year monitoring period post-closure that we do anticipate coming to a conclusion here pretty soon. I did speak with our consultant to make sure that that number was accurate, and he anticipates that being in two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-seven. So we're, we're close. And the things that will affect that are making sure that our monitoring wells fare well on our sampling, quarterly reporting. So we're crossing our fingers there.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Pesesh. Opening up for any questions or comments from council. All right, we can move on to item number six, and I believe that's you, Ms. Perkel.
Thank you. So the city has plans to put in a red light at Stanley Street and Alton Tucker Extension. I was not in favor of the Alton Tucker Extension and spoke against that when it was added. That was, I don't know, one point eight million dollars or something for the road there. On the other side of Stanley Street is just the new apartments. I don't see a reason for every resident in Sugar Hill to be inconvenienced with a red light on twenty for new apartments on Stanley Street. There's an entrance for apartments on Peachtree Industrial. I'm more than happy to put a red light there. The distance between red lights is probably at least twice as far apart as that. The traffic on Peachtree Industrial north of twenty is probably a quarter of what's on Highway twenty. We need to look at a red light there. I'm happy to do it. I do not want to see another red light on Highway twenty, and I would like for the council to vote on that.
All right, thanks, Ms. Perkel. Again, there was no information provided prior to staff on, on this agenda item, but is there any comments or anything from staff on this particular item?
I can answer the question. It was part of the contract with Amshill for the construction of the Alton Tucker realignment. I, I think it's in their contract currently. There are some materials that were already ordered, are probably on the way. And I would say that Georgia DOT has already reviewed and approved the signal permit for that location.
Based on our request, which I would like to rescind, I'm happy to eat the cost of the red light.
Mayor, I get. I, I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what the, this is based on, what data this is based on, other than I just don't want it. I've got, because it was a zoning condition as part of that, for the developer to contribute two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the cost of the construction. We have a report here. I'm sure that the developer is not, you know, is not in the habit of wanting to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars if they don't want to. But the fact of the matter is, this is a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy-page report, a signal warrant analysis that warranted the light. GDOT would not have approved a light there if it was not needed or necessary or warranted. At the very least, we have a moral obligation, because it is, meets the warrant requirements of the state of Georgia, to provide a light there. God forbid somebody gets killed there making a left turn. It's also part of a planning document, a, a comprehensive planning document, a downtown Sugar Hill mobility study. So it's not some willy-nilly desire to put a light in at Stanley Street and Alton Tucker Extension. It is a thoroughly researched, paid for by others, outside of about twenty thousand dollars on the city's part, I believe, roughly. There is plenty of documentation to support a light there, and not only that, there's a moral obligation on this, on the city's part. Should, because we know it warrants a, a light there, how do you take a light away when we know for a fact that a light is warranted there? And if somebody pulls out and gets killed there, and we have to explain to the judge, well, we just didn't want the light even though we knew we needed it. That's ridiculous, so.
That study was paid for by the developer for the benefit of the developer and the residents that will use it, not for the rest of the city. I'm happy to close the meeting there, so there is no left turn. Should be right, right in, right out only. And again, I'm happy to put a red light on Peachtree Industrial, which has much less traffic.
Okay, any further discussion or?
I just have one question. I just want to clarify for the red light. Have all of the permits and everything is a go as far as the state geotae? There's nothing else that needs to be approved or permitted for the light?
No.
Okay. All right, if there's no further discussion on item number six, we can move on to item number seven, and I guess you.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity to read the twenty twenty-two audit. I've included excerpts from it in your packet, some things I'd like to point out. You might have been aware of all of them. I was not. On the page number three, cash and restricted equivalent shows thirty-four million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. The total current assets, thirty-nine million, thirty-four, or thirty-nine million, four hundred and fifty thousand. Looking on page seven, at the revenues, the general fund brings in about thirteen million dollars per year. There's an excess deficiency revenues, one point eight million dollars. Not quite sure what that is. Would like to discuss that some other time. The fund balance at the end of the year is twenty-seven million dollars. Continuing on to page twenty-four, Downtown Development Authority Long-Term Liabilities, forty-three million dollars. Continuing on to page twenty-five, annual requirements to amortize the Series twenty twenty-one bonds, which are one of, I think, at least three bonds outstanding. That's due through the year twenty thirty-five, twenty million dollars in principal, five million dollars in interest, which I've never heard discussed, and twenty-five million dollars. When I did the open records request, I don't think that included any interest. That was only principal amounts. So that leaves, if you go down to the bottom, page twenty-five, eight million, eight point six million dollars in interest that I was unaware of, leaving the total bonds held debt at forty-six point three million dollars. I'd say maybe about three million dollars of that was paid off. I thought the original was in forty million dollars. Again, that probably just didn't include the interest. But at the same point in town, that's a lot of money there. The reason, some other things, and before I get into the details on that. On page thirty-eight, in the audit, housing and development. I'm not sure exactly what that's referring to. I don't think any housing that we're building. Not sure what the development part is. That's four point eight million dollars. Sploost on page forty-nine says twenty seventeen Sploost, that roads, streets, bridges, and related facilities has nine million dollars allocated, only two point three million dollars spent. If that means there's seven point five million dollars unspent so far, I know a lot of roads that it needs to be spent on. Talking about the debt and why it's important. If you look at the authorizing resolution that I also included in the packet, it says the city will agree to make payments to the authority in amounts sufficient to enable the authority to pay, among other things, the principal of, premium, and if any interest on the bond, when due. And, this is the important part here to me, level on annual ad valorem tax on all taxable properties located within the corporate limits of the city at such rates as within three mil limit authorized to pay for it. That means if the city is not able to pay for it otherwise, they're going to increase my property taxes by about three point nills, which is nearly double what it is. Now, there's other, that's only for the parking deck bonds, seven point six one five million dollars. There's also over twenty million dollars in, and then I think another nine million dollar bond for the gym. Maybe it's twelve million dollars. And the theater, I asked Mr. Hartley about those. I asked Ms. Whittington if there were additional authorizing resolutions similar to this that obligated additional tax increases on the city if necessary to pay for them. And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Hartley, the discussion we had before this meeting, and Ms. Whittington provided these, I have not had, at the start of the meeting, so I've not had a chance to read through them. But my question is about the obligation on these other bonds. As you indicated, they're backed by the full faith and credit of the city, but they're not limited to the three, three mil limit. So if the city were not able to pay for these other debts, the bill could go higher than that. There's no cap on it. In other words, do I understand that correct?
That is my understanding, is that they are backed by the full faith and credit of the city. There are different, different ways and reasons that revenue bonds can be issued. Some revenue bonds are subject to a three mil cap, and you can stack. Some revenue bonds are subject to a three-mil cap, and you can stack a number of different issues, or meaning projects, when I say issues. Number of different projects to meet that three-mil cap on your economic development. But there are other ways you can issue revenue bonds that are not subject to that three-mil cap. Getting into the details of that is really more of a question for Bond Council than for me. I'm your local council. I'm your city attorney. When you start talking about bond transactions and those kind of things, if you have specific questions, you can let me know, and we can certainly get those answers from Bond Council. But bonds are very complex, and we always have to seek help from the professionals when we're doing bond transactions. And so, we might have to get additional information from Bond Council.
So, the point behind that is, there's nothing happening downtown, to me, that is worth doubling, tripling, or quadrupling my taxes for. Obviously, that's not immediately called for. These are called revenue bonds. I believe great hoops were jumped through to make them called revenue bonds because they're largely being paid for by a $2 million transfer from the gas system, which should not be on the hook to pay for all of this. These projects are not going to generate the money it takes to pay for them. The commercial space, I think, is, that bond is due up next year, so it may wind up coming and paying for itself. The parking deck itself will not, since we're not charging for parking, is not going to pay for that. Obviously, there is some revenue tied to the restaurant space there. They just leased out one, which I think they said was 1,200 square feet, which is about 10% of the whole restaurant space available over there. They were leasing it out at $29 a square foot. I think I calculated that to be $36,000 a year. If that's 10%, 360,000, but you're paying on a $7.6 million bond. All of those, obviously, has not been leased out. Hopefully, they will be, and they'll be able to pay for themselves. The gym is never going to pay for itself. The city's going to pay for that. The theater's never going to pay for itself. It's losing money. If I looked at the budget right, I think like $600,000 this year. Obviously, things don't always pay for themselves. Police department's not, recreation's not. Everything's not going to pay for itself, but everything can't lose money. My point in all this is saying we need a more focused effort on paying down debt.
Thanks, Mr. Perkel. I will open it up for any questions or comments.
I have a question there.
Yeah, wait till.
Might be helpful for staff to pull the bonds, the revenue bonds throughout the state, and find out how many of those, I think a number, in the last 10 or 20 years, in which case, the amount of the bonds that are out, revenue bonds that are outstanding throughout the state, and how many of those are, have been called or had to been paid through some sort of a tax increase as a result of a failure of the revenue to be produced. That might be helpful for context. I think this is something, yes, it's in the bonds. How often does it happen, is the question I have, rather than trying to be dramatic about potentially increasing our, doubling our taxes to pay for these bonds, which would not happen because the asset itself has a value. So, at the very least, you would sell the asset before you would ever raise taxes. And given the timing of these and the interest rates, the asset is worth significantly more than what the bond is outstanding for. But in terms of what are the actual real chances of that happening would be helpful in terms of this conversation. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
I would hope there's zero. Typically, when you would think of a revenue bond, you would think of it as a toll bridge or a toll road or something, where you're generating revenue from outside the system. When we're taking money from the gas system and then using that to pay rent to the DDA, we're taking money out of our right pocket, putting it in our left pocket, and calling it revenue. It was money we already had that was not obligated. It is now. And if there's any chance of my property taxes going up at those sort of levels, I want to pay those debts down. That was pretty much it there. I'm going to move on to the next. And again, these are not problems that we're going to solve at one meeting. They're going to take some determination, sit down and go forward with them. But the implication of this leads into the next item.
All right, let's move on to item number...
Eight.
Item number eight.
Right. So, looking at the budget then, with the thought in mind that we have $48 million in debt, I think we need to make some adjustments to it. I'm not suggesting that we sit through and go through them all tonight, but I would like to point out some things in consideration. For instance, the Eagle Theater planned to lose $600,000 this year. Correct me if I'm reading these numbers wrong. It was like $285,000 in revenue and $800-plus thousand in expenses. The Bowl Plaza shows $146,000 increase in our spending on it. But I've already had discussions with staff. I know we were selling discounted tickets to fill it up. Obviously, there's some considerations around that come out of COVID and those sort of things, but don't want to keep dumping money into a money loser. There's not a separate item that shows the revenue associated with that in terms of a separate department that I saw to make a direct comparison. I know what is our financial gain or loss on that. And again, everything doesn't have to make money, but everything can't lose money. Riverlands Development Authority, $80,000 on a master plan there. I don't plan on doing development out there. Transferring from the gas system of $2.176 million, again, to pay for the bonds. I think we're putting a heavy obligation on our gas system. The base rate was increased from like $13.50 to $17 when we were already making over a million dollars profit. That was, I think, around 2016, 2021. And look at the minutes. We doubled the base rate on businesses from $17 to $34. We're using that to pay for our expenses here on these buildings. I don't think it's fair to put all that on the gas system, but that's where we are, which is again, why I want to look at reducing those debt loads, make them more manageable. There's a DDA land sale in the budget of $2.43 million. I'm not sure I'm bored with selling that. That's going to put a massive hole in the budget if that is not sold, and if it's not sold at that price. The budget shows $18 million in general fund expenses. The audit that we just looked at showed, I think, $13 million in annual projected revenues. Again, that's 2022, not 2023. So, that means we're pumping money into the general fund to pay for that. Obviously, that's not sustainable over the long haul. It did drop from $21 million to $18 million. I think we need to relook at that. There's over $9 million in the capital budget. Certainly, things in there I don't agree with. So, I think we need to revisit the budget in light of the audit. I think there are several new hires that are in the budget that I don't think we ought to move forward with, outside of the new hire in the in the street department to pick up the waste every week instead of every two weeks. I think we need to look at other areas and what we're doing with some of these expenses within the general fund, and see if those are areas that we want to continue to spend money on, whether it may or may not be some reorganization there. Again, it's not something I think we can get into all the details on tonight, but at least wanted to introduce it. And I do think we need to have a planning meeting at some point. I've asked for that to be held. We have not scheduled a date on it. There are a lot of these items that we need to discuss. I think where there, find where there's consensus among the council, where we all agree on something, let's move on with it and not take a lot of time where we don't agree. Let's find out where we're going with it. Thank you.
All right, and just, thanks, Mr. Perkel. And just for my, so, item seven and item eight, definitely both required some pretty, you know, lengthy, whether it's future items and all of that. What is, you know, and again, taking these to session.
They're not, thanks, for the council meeting. Sorry, they're not for the council meeting. They're just for discussion here, where we can put out some ideas, get time to flesh them out. I do think we need to schedule a longer meeting that we'll have at some point to discuss those, but put them out as discussion items, but not ready for action yet.
Got it. And again, this is just questions. You know, and again, as I see here and going through the questions, I see the staff feverishly writing down notes and trying to get updates and all of that. I think that, you know, if there is any opportunity to kind of discuss some of these things prior to these, and again, I think even for us as council, it provides a little bit of context and clarity for us to be able to.
Right. That's why I put these specific pages in here to mention the things I'm talking about.
Right.
I have had one meeting on the budget with the staff, and I'm happy to have others. I don't think that just one person discussing them gets there. I think it needs to be a whole council discussing.
110 agree with that.
Really, just, they've been introduced now, and need to find a way to move forward with discussions on them. But nothing ready for action at the council meeting.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mr. Perkel. Is there any comments or questions on council or staff for item number eight? All right, let's go to item number nine, and that one also is you, Mr. Perkel.
Right. So, I understand the chairman of the Planning Commission has resigned. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Wana, and?
That's correct.
And I also understand that all the terms of the other board members has expired? Is that correct? Right. So, I tried to contact, I only had contact information for two of them. I've not been able to contact the two. I did contact Rosemary Walsh. She said she wants to stay on. She's also missed a lot of the meetings recently. I wanted to check on her, make sure that's something that she'll be able to do in the future. I didn't get a response on that part of it, but she did say she wanted to stay on. Maybe that's an implication of that. I checked with Phil Olson, and he does want to stay on. I did not have any contact information and could not find any for the other two current board members. Just want to make the council aware of that. We need to fill at least the open position, and all the others are up as well for discussion, but wanted to bring that to the council's attention.
Miss question, Ms. Avery?
Yes, I would just like to say that, being that all of the members of the board on the Planning Commission have expired, I think, and we have one vacancy, it is very important to contact each of the members of the board and find out, do they really want to be on it? Are they willing to put in the time? We need regular attendance at the board meetings. The Planning Commission does not meet every month. Last year, they did not. So, it, and they're usually, I don't know how long the meetings are, but the Planning Commission is very important. Even though they're not voting, they're making recommendations to the city council. And as Mr. Perkel mentioned, you know, two of the members did express they would like to be on the board. But I would also like to add that regular attendance is absolutely imperative. And we need to either reappoint or have new members appointed. So, that does, that would need to be on the council agenda for next month, next week.
Since, I have a question. Kipo, you might be able to answer this. Since all of the terms are expired, would we do some sort of proration so they don't all expire once again? Is that how that would work if we appoint?
Yes, the terms, the terms are staggered.
Okay.
The way the Planning Commission appointments work, they serve at your pleasure until a successor is assigned. Each post has, two of them, two of them expire in 2024. One is in 2025, and then two others are in 2026. So, if those, if the existing members, it was your, if they were reappointed, they would serve through the end of their term and then have to be reappointed, or could be reappointed.
Sir Anderson?
Kipo, can, I mean, I can reach out to Julie and Jason and see if they're interested in continuing to serve what there are. But do you have a, do you have an attendance record over the last two years of the four planning commissioners to, so that we have some context as to what Ms. Avery was talking about as far as their ability to attend or their willingness to attend meetings in the past? Do you have a?
Not with me, but we do have it.
Okay. Yeah, if you could bring that with, on next Monday, that would be helpful for council to understand. Yeah, yeah, if you could, yeah, or, yeah, put it in, include it as an attachment. That'd be fantastic. Thank you.
And if you could also include when each term expires, because on the city website, it does list the names of the people on the Planning Commission, but it doesn't list what their term is.
If there's no further comments or questions on item number nine, we can move to item 10, and that's Ms. Avery.
Finally, there's somebody different presenting something. How about that, y'all? Okay. I would like to say that I have been doing some research and data on sanitation services in Sugar Hill. And I heard many comments last year about Sugar Hill customers. I'm just going to do a short recap of how we got to where we are right now, that first of all, people were really not too happy with waste management when they discontinued the bag service and only began to offer cart service. And also went from every week to every other week recycling. And also, previously, taking large household items was a huge bonus because all you had to do was put a bag on a, say, a chair, and they would take that. And now, if you have a large household item, you have to call waste management, and there is an extra charge for that. Residents, especially those in a small household, who were paying $40 a box for 25 bags that potentially lasted six months, were paying that $40 for trash and recycling pickup for about six months. And now, with the recent, most recent price increase, everyone is paying $19.66 a month, which is billed quarterly for $58.98. So, when you break that down, residents who were spending $80 a year for bags are now spending $235.92 a year. That is a major change. So, because of that new price structure and changing the recycling schedule, as well as the large household items, many residents became very unhappy with waste management. And that was brought up last year at a couple of city council meetings, but it just seemed to go nowhere. So, this is the year it's going to go somewhere. And some of the comments that I've heard from residents are, sometimes it's on the waste management website. There's not, it's difficult to find a telephone number, and people are on hold for a long time. Sometimes the trash cans are in the middle of the driveway. Sometimes they're in the street. I know in my street, sometimes they're, they are obstructing traffic, and I get out and move them. And some people try, are on hold for a long time with waste management. And calling them doesn't really produce a lot of results. Sometimes the carts are in the dish, in the ditch. Sometimes they're just not where they should be. So, complaints, as I said, were given, and it just, we've had waste management for a long time. Before that, it was advanced disposal. And so, I thought, well, okay, let's see. What's happening in other cities? Swanee and Grayson have Republic Sanitation Services, and Lawrenceville provides their own. Duluth, I'd heard a lot about Duluth and how they still have the bag service. Well, they do have Republic, but they are discontinuing the bag service as of May 1st, as many companies are. It's cost prohibitive and for labor. And of course, now, the big thing is to go to the mechanical arm that automatically picks up a cart. And to eliminate, you know, so many drivers on each truck. You have a driver, you have an attendant. So, the bag is not becoming as cost-effective for companies. So, Duluth is changing. Also, Duluth residents, the cost of trash service is through their city property taxes. Now, Snellville is very different. They have their own sanitation service, but waste management is their hauler for commercial. And Latham Home Sanitation, which is based in Loganville, services Snellville for their residential service. And Snellville provides each resident a garbage cart for free. And Snellville provides each resident a garbage cart for free. If residents want to buy a bag, they can buy a box of 10 bags for $16. But they don't have to have the bags since Snellville provides them with a cart. And Snellville pays the bill for sanitation service for their residential services. DeCula does their own sanitation as well. As far as waste management goes, Peachtree Corners, Norcross and Lilburn all use waste management. They all have recycling every week. Most of them have, their prices are less per month than ours. Trash and recycling for Peachtree Corners is $17.25 a month. And they pay that as part of their Gwinnett County property tax bill. So Peachtree Corners residents don't pay waste management at all. It's handled annually through their Gwinnett County property taxes. Also, with Peachtree Corners, residents 65 and older are eligible for a 15% discount. And everyone gets the large cart, no bags in Peachtree Corners. They serve a little over 9,000 residents. It, also Norcross, they have a rate for senior citizens, which is $12.99 a month. And they, the residents of Norcross also pay for their trash services annually, but through the city property taxes, not county. I asked waste management, okay, so what about a senior discount? Waste management said they do not give Norcross, they give them one flat rate. If Norcross wants to give senior citizens a discount, that's up to them and that's what they have done. And as I mentioned, they do have recycling every week. Lilburn uses waste management. Now their price is $18.11 a month for recycling and trash pickup every week. Alpharetta uses Republic and they have trash and recycling. One thing I did like about this system is on the Alpharetta City website, they have a trash and recycling monthly performance report from Republic, which is on the city of Alpharetta website. And the residents pay the city directly every three months and there are discounts for ages. They can choose the size of the container and they can choose whether or not to have recycling. So they have different prices in Alpharetta using Republic, depending on age and the size of cart that you have. Kennesaw uses Republic. In Johns Creek and Swanee, residents have to set up trash service themselves. And they're, they don't have a specific company that they have to use. I don't really like that because if you're in one neighborhood and you might have three different companies coming through your neighborhood in the same week. And that is certainly not an ideal situation. I did speak with a district manager at waste management, Steve Edwards, and I thought it was really interesting to hear his explanation of the recycling situation. There has, as we all know, there have been price increases everywhere. Gas, groceries, taxes, I mean, all across the board with recycling. Because of the recycling market commodities, there was the market crash, the pandemic and a national labor shortage, recycling costs now about $90 a ton, $90 per ton to process a ton of recyclables today. So basically, when we had the bag system and you were paying, or people were paying, say, $80 a year, basically you were getting recycling for free since you were just buying a bag and the bins were provided. You had the 18 gallon bins. So recycling has gone up and I can see where, okay, so that wasn't working for them to have the bags. But still, this viable situation is not good. Steve explained about the shortage with labor. And he also said that when I brought up that most of the other cities have every week recycling, one of the things that he mentioned is that recycling every other week reduces the wear and tear on city streets and reduces noise and air pollution. So I guess in Sugar Hill, we should feel very lucky that our streets are not being torn up for every week recycling. And the other cities are, but I don't like that. I think we should have every week recycling. And also, he informed me that Sugar Hill is close to the lowest cost in the area with the best service. I think the service is pretty much okay, but I hear a lot of complaints. And I really don't, there's no such thing as a perfect company. There's always going to be issues no matter who you're with. So I think there are some things that we can look at. Like the senior discount is one. I did ask Steve if it would be less costly if the city of Sugar Hill included garbage services on their annual city property tax. I don't know how people would feel about paying an annual fee included in the city property tax, but I thought, I wonder if that makes a difference? And he said that would only decrease the bill by maybe 2 or 3%. So to me, I thought that, okay, so instead of waste management sending out 7,000 bills for, that's how many customers they have in Sugar Hill, there would just be one bill through the city since city residents would be paying it on their city property tax. That might be an option. I don't know if that's a great option or not, but it was something to explore. He did state that if we want weekly recycling, there would be a price increase. And he explained that because Norcross and Lilburn have so much commercial, that their cost of residential sanitation service is lower than ours. So we have several questions to consider about trash services. And who should have this contract with Sugar Hill? Whether it's waste management or someone else? Some of those questions are, do we add the trash fee to the city property tax? And if so, should there be a senior discount for the trash, as there is for the homestead exemption? Should there be a recycling bin for paper only, such as shredded paper and magazines at Robinson Park near the county sponsored glass recycling bin that could be picked up by a sanitation service? Maybe the same company that the county uses for the glass could, could pick up paper? Is it time to put out a request for proposals for sanitation services in Sugar Hill? Another interesting item, by looking at the budget, that I discovered are franchise fees. We have revenue for the city of Sugar Hill in franchise fees for the trash service. In 2023, the approved amount was $75,000. As of November 17, 2023, $145,000, $145,837 was actually spent. And in our new budget in 2024, the proposed franchise fee revenue is $125,000. I know that part of that is commercial and part of it is residential. I'm not sure what they, where that stands. But I really believe we need to look at lowering the franchise fee considerably so that our residents pay less for sanitation services. So I think we need to have an item on the city council agenda next week that we look at sanitation services. Perhaps we do need to put out a request for, for proposals, since we've had waste management for many years. And put some competition out there and see what happens. Have there any comments from the staff? Troy, I had talked to Troy about this as well and I know he's been looking into it also.
All right, so I'll ask if there are any questions from, from staff in regards to Ms. Avery's.
It was a very thorough explanation, so good job on that. I would say, one of the items that is in our contract with waste management, excuse me, is they do the curbside collection service in the spring. And that's coming up May 6th through 10th. The only thing I would add to the conversation. That is already built into the rate structure, so you're not paying extra on your regular trash day.
A couple of comments related to that. One, I saw a Facebook ad recently for Gwinnett County non incorporated residents. It said you could contact them for free weekly recycling. So that's a service that the county offers that's not available to residents within the city, but it is done weekly. So I'd like to check into us doing weekly. I don't think it's something we could do with that county program. But I think that's the standard. It was reduced when this last contract came out. I'd like to see it reestablished. The other thing was, and I don't know how many, if we got to bits, how many people would bid the bag system? I liked it for a lot of reasons. You only paid for what you threw away. It gave you an easy way to get rid of large bulky items. And I think the lack of having an easy way to do it, right now you have to call and make an appointment and there's a separate fee for it. Where before you just taped a bag to it and they would pick it up. Not items with free on and that sort of stuff, but you have a dishwasher, you have a clothes dryer, those sort of things. You just put them out there, tape a bag to it, they take a couch, a bed, they take them away. With the lack of an easy and cheap way of getting rid of large bulky items, it tends to lead to dumping. And one of the things I saw a while back when I was going down Pine Crest, sitting in the back of that road, there was a couch and a loveseat just sitting there, someone had dumped at the back of the road. I don't know if they're still there, that was several months ago. But those are the sort of things that, that you do see without convenient ways to get rid of bulky items. So I preferred that system. I'd like it to be an option. I don't know how realistic it will be for others to bid on it. I, I do agree with Meg that we've had the same company for a long time. We had Robertson, I think they were bought out by Advanced Disposal. Advanced Disposal was bought out by waste, so it's basically been the same company for a long time. I do think there's been some degradation in service along the way. And I don't think it would hurt to see what other options are out there.
And as far as the bag service goes, I thought it was very interesting that Snellville uses Latham Home Sanitation. They're based in Loganville. And if a resident buys, they have a box of 10 bags for $16. So that might be an option. And I mean, a little competition, a little comparison, might be very well worth it for the residents of Sugar Hill.
From a comparison standpoint, as a resident of the city of Orangeville, I pay more than y'all do. City of Orangeville does it itself, but it's $20 a month. You, you get recycling every other week, just like here. And large items, you have to call, schedule an appointment and there's an additional fee.
I don't think Sugar Hill is going to get into the business of providing their own sanitation services.
Paul and Troy, I'm not sure if y'all know the direct takes to this, but is Peachtree Corners one of the cities in Gwinnett that allows Gwinnett County to bill their city taxes still? Is that maybe the difference there of why the county bills for their trash and the city? Is that correct? Okay, okay.
Peachtree Corners still has their taxes billed. Peachtree, let me rephrase that. Peachtree Corners has no taxes. Peachtree Corners is all fee based, but all of their fees, they charge for streetlights and sanitation and a whole host of fees. All their fees are billed by the county tax commissioner on the county tax bill.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, we'll move on to item number 11 and that's Mr. Page.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to bring up the map for, I guess, number 11 and I apologize. I was not specific enough for Ms. Whittington, so that was my apologies on that for the lack of clarity. But I do want to have a conversation in, in hopes to see where we can go just around general safety on, on both 11 and 12. The first intersection is a conglomerate here. Railroad, Lanier, Chapel and First Avenue all come together right here at the railroad crossing. And I actually spoke to Andy Smith maybe about two or three weeks ago and someone actually fell off of the railroad crossing there and that's not the first time. But I spoke to the person who actually helped get her off the tracks. This was her first time in the city of Sugar Hill. It was a night, it was rainy, foggy a couple of weeks ago, so understandable. But it's not the greatest intersection. It's never been the greatest intersection. And having a conversation with both Paul and Troy and Cindy, I would, I would like the council to, I guess, high level, just start having the staff work on some sort of feasibility and general cost outlaying of, of realigning this intersection here and, and what that would all entail, even if it's even possible. Because we do have some challenges. Of course, we've got the railroad issue to deal with, but we also have, I'm not exactly sure if it's a pressure regulator for our own gas system right there on the corner. So you can kind of see that right there in the barbed wire. But also you've got a grade elevation coming off of Railroad Avenue to Old Coming. And so lots of different things going on there. But I think we have an opportunity to increase safety at this intersection. So I'll, I'll pass it back to you, Mr. Hicks.
One thing there perhaps, right, widen that roadway. As you noticed there, you don't see the stripe through it, but it's not particularly wide. And obviously, somebody did fall off the edge of it and could and would lead to great difficulty in a car getting off if a train was coming. So if nothing else, maybe if we could extend the asphalt up the tracks several feet there.
And she, and she was stuck for about 15, 20 minutes before she finally got off. I mean, she was a little, little punch buggy, little car, so it was, didn't help the cause.
I'm familiar with that intersection as well and I try to avoid it often. I would never go anywhere near the intersection at night. I mean, Gwinnett is, is bad enough as it is at night, not enough lights and, but the way the grading is and the, just the whole thing, there's no way. But if there's something that the city could do, I know that, that would be, it's a huge, it is a safety issue. I'm surprised there have not been more problems with both, both 11 and 12. But especially 11, that's just the oddest, most unusual intersection ever.
The angles of the road there, yeah, but additional lighting in addition to additional asphalt may be helpful as well.
In addition to an added safety concern, I believe it's the corner of Chapel and Lanier, Gwinnett County School Bus Stop, I believe for elementary and middle. So lots of action there in the mornings, you know, with just the bus stop and then you add the intersection. So it, it's a conglomerate there, so it's a mess. But like I said, my intention behind that is really, if, if that's even something feasible that we could do at the city level, not, not telling anybody to go knee deep and get an RFP at this point, but just see if that's something that we can even accomplish.
If I could update that particular location, Mayor Hembry asked me to look at it last fall and Norfolk Southern is getting ready to start a project to improve the crossing. And I haven't seen any details on it, but I can see what their plan is and see if there's opportunities to add lighting, add some other elements. We've installed in the past some, I'll call them hurdles, but they're the delineators, is what I'm looking for, along the edge there, but they lasted maybe a month and they just keep getting knocked down as people take a southbound right from railroad onto here. But there are some opportunities we can look at.
If you go up the railroad a couple of miles into Buford, there's new track laid down there and a bunch of cross ties. So they plan on doing work in the general area before too long. So perhaps we could get in on that as well.
I think the challenges that I guess we've heard from are related to the gas regulator station at Railroad and Lanier and then also the grades at that location. If all five streets or six streets in the area were at or about the same elevation, I think it would be a little bit easier for us to tackle. But it's been this way since probably before you were born and maybe as long as Gary and Meg have been here.
Yeah, you're not going to change the grades very easily right now.
Awesome, great. No, Mr. Page, you said that she was in a little punch buggy car and if she was in a Dodge, she probably wouldn't have gotten out of there.
That was low.
All right, so let's move on. If there's no more comments on it, number 11, we can move on to 12 and that's also you, Mr. Page.
Yeah, same, same spirit behind this one. North Price, Old Atlanta Highway, Old Swanee Highway, Duncan Drive. You know, same kind of issues. Of course, you've got utilities over there in the corner, but if you're coming back from Lanier headed towards Buford, you've kind of got a little rise. If you can turn us around here, Troy, just a little bit. And that, that kind of poses some issues just because you've got some street racers, of course, that like to fly over there that you think will, you know, continue to fly over the hill as you're trying to cross over North Price. I mean, so I've been surprised several times as I've trying to come on North Price and, and hit Old Atlanta. You know, so, so same sort of direction. You know, so, so same sort of direction I would like to propose to give to staff is seeing what, is there anything else we can do in terms of, in terms of safety or any speed, speed, I hate to say speed bumps. Troy, correct me, what is the proper term? Speed, uh, traffic calming devices that we can install. Just something to, to really alleviate any type of fear from North Price. I'm a very confident driver, I will say that. So I'm sure there's other folks out there, you know, who are, who not, who, who get very surprised, if you will, when someone comes over the hill. You know, and of course, lighting is poor here as well. But of course, this one's a little flat. So there might be an opportunity to, to, to correct or to help the situation at this intersection.
Awesome, thanks, Mr. Page. Any comments or questions from staff or council?
As I'm looking at this picture, I'm thinking, okay, I know that roundabouts have become very popular lately to slow down traffic. This is a pretty, that area is not as bad as number eleven. And maybe, maybe a roundabout might work there. I don't know. But that just happened to occur to me. That might help a little bit. That might be one of the possibilities.
I want to take a brief tangent on that since you're talking about roundabouts. The one we have on Broad Street there, I don't think functions well from the standpoint, the planter is too high. A roundabout, you want to keep moving, right? And you can't see through it. I drive a truck. And with a high del planter and then the planting above it and the wagon in there, you can't see across the intersection. So it always functions as a stop sign at least to me, not to everybody. I think that visibility will, would be a lot better if that planter height were reduced there.
Cool, great. All right, if there's no further comments or questions, that concludes our agenda items. So moving on to the city manager for any updates.
I could keep you here all night. But Xavier asked me to look at, provide y'all a weekly update on things. We'll, we'll do that starting next month.
Okay.
Things like if the ARC sent back that report for comments, I think it would have been good for us to know before we just reissued that. Yeah, I think we're moving in a different direction than some of those things that were on there though. And that's why I think we need a meeting to discuss, where do we have consensus and where do we not on projects?
All right, that's all you have, Mr. Radford? All right? Here's.
I will give clarification when I come to the council meeting. I believe the items three, four, five, nine, ten and possibly six, discuss four.
One, two.
Do the planning commission.
Well, don't we have to vote?
You can direct staff. You can just direct staff.
Okay, if that may be on the agenda, that's fine. I didn't want to go against it.
Yeah, I think you can just direct staff. And I didn't particularly hear any opposition. I think you can just direct staff for those to move forward to the planning commission and then they'll come back to your agenda.
Everyone good for that or do we need to vote on it? Okay. No, go to February, come to, go to Planning Zoning in February. Back to us in March. Unless they table or anything. Yep.
So you're saying.
One and two.
One and two.
Mission appointments will be.
No, no, no.
One and two, items one and two.
The, the.
Items one and two.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
So three, four, five, six, nine and ten.
And what were we looking for, item ten? What were we looking for from item ten? For an RFP?
Yes.
For an RFP. All right, three, four, nine and ten?
Five, six, seven, ten then. Do we need to discuss the elements of RFP before we do that? Or you want to do that at the meeting? Or?
Do that at the meeting.
Okay. All right.
Okay. You have it. All right, Mr. Radford. Is there any need for executive session?
I do not have any.
Frank, yeah. All right, so need for executive session? I will call this meeting adjourned.
We picked up state, first state.